Everybody? Are we ready? Okay. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Scottsdale Unified School District Governing Board's Special Meeting Workshop. And today is December 17th, 2015. The time is for open M. We'll start with the call order. Call, yeah, call order, roll call or, um, roll call. This is going to be Camper Department, Department of Service.
George Jackson.
I'm going to make sure my phone is turned off here. Okay. So we're here today to talk about item two, information discussion with possible board actions. We are here with Arizona School Board Association, representing the governing board with information related to the search process for a district interim superintendent. And the board may consider directing us to initiate the search process. So this will be our time to understand the services that ASBA will provide and also to ask questions of them.
I will get your video line.
Well, where did we all come to the table so we're invited?
Okay. Dr. Tim Ogul, he's the executive director of Arizona, um, Arizona School Board Association, ASBA. I'm so used to just using the acronym. And Steve Hyland is with us. He's conducted many searches over the years. You guys can come in.
Thank you.
Formal introduction.
Thank you for having us.
We don't fight one with this hard way.
No, you don't fight one with this hard way. Just funny, thank you. We just want to follow protocol, that's all. But thank you for having us. We're happy to be here to help, and that is truly our role. We're here as your agent to help you be successful and help you find the needs that you have to get through this interim period and hopefully, and then roll that right into a permanent search for a permanent superintendent. So let me just kind of do a bit of overview about myself and about Steve and why we're here today. We have a team of folks that work on superintendent searches around the state. In the last five years, we have conducted eighty successful superintendent searches in our state. And it's a big, broad state with lots of complexity. And we pride ourselves in doing excellent quality and service to the board and following your direction to lead you where you want to go. As far as myself goes, I am a former superintendent for ten years, a high school principal previous to that, had done the K-12 career, and came here in 2012 for this professional opportunity. Steve is a veteran of central office administration, having most recently served at the highest levels of assistant superintendent in Peoria for a number of years after being principal. Has been with ASBA for
Going on seven.
Seven years, has been the point person on many searches. We have Karen Loftus, who is a Scottsdale resident, is the leader of our leadership development team. And we have opted her out of this search, number one, because of family travel, and also because, as a former Scottsdale parent, we wanted to remove any perception of any vested interest or historical context of any type. And so neither of us, although I am a resident, have only been here since 2012 and have no relationships with district employees, you know, other than just from my associations at ASBA. And so I'll be the point person for the interim search. And if we're fortunate enough to be selected to continue on to the search for the permanent superintendent, Steve and I will switch roles. We will certainly function as a team, but he has some family travel and I'm in town over the next couple of weeks. So that's kind of how our plan is unless you folks want it to play out a little differently. But that's kind of our plan going in. That being said, Steve, any overview that you wanted to provide relative to those kinds of things?
No, I think, I think that's a good overview. I think that what is on the agenda outlines basically the conversation that Tim's going to lead us through in a few minutes. I think that it leads, it lends itself in terms of the explanation on the board agenda to a good conversation, gives you opportunity to ask questions. And then with everything asked, because I know you have a lot of things on your mind. You have a lot of things, well, how does this work? And how long is it going to take? And what are the different components? And what's our responsibilities? And what's our role as a board? Those are all very important things. So as we work through this, please do be very, very direct in terms of your questions and your thoughts and make sure that you, before we leave today, you have everything answered that you need so that you feel like you have a viable opportunity to move forward in a way that as an individual and as a board you want to. With that, I think if you're ready, we can start, begin, and Tim will go through the things on the agenda that we've listed in the, in the language. As president, it's really yours.
Please.
All right. We put on there a variety of topics that are common to boards when they're in positions like the Scottsdale Unified Board is in. And so we intend it to be a conversation much more than a presentation. But let me start off by saying, to help us through this process, the first thing that we would like to draw out of the five of you is kind of a definition or a couple of sentences to define the expectation of a central. What is your expectation with regards to an interim superintendent? What would you identify as the couple of most critical elements for a person to come in and be successful in?
I'm trying to figure your identifies.
Mr. Parkin? I, um, I'll offer, probably, part of this is premise on how long it will take.
Yes. That's on my list also.
Yeah. So assuming that it's not a long period of time, I would say to maintain day-to-day operations.
Okay.
I also have a process for the question.
Of course.
And this is internal and external.
Okay. So great, great starting point. Once I was notified that we had been selected to conduct the search, Steve and his team put together a posting, and that job was posted on yesterday morning, early in the morning. And it was posted as interim superintendent, Scottsdale Unified, our, we became the point of contact, and we posted it as open until filled. And that was our, that's what was in our brain with regards to best meet your needs, rather than have a definitive deadline, because as we get more into this discussion, we hope to, to have you realize that the talent pool will be very slim. And if we find someone who is qualified, willing, and available, we're going to recommend you make a decision very quickly. So that's why it's open until filled, so to speak.
Thank you. Thank you. Posting that went up yesterday, beyond just the open until filled, was there any other language?
Little bit. Steve crafted the language for us.
Right.
It was very generic, on purpose, because we hadn't met with you. And our recommendation is at this point that you would keep it generic. And the reason you would keep it generic is because if you're on a fast timeline, which we need to discuss this afternoon, if you're on a fast timeline, let's leave that for the review of the applicants initially, determine who meets the, the standards that you're looking for, who you're, who you really want sitting here. Let's get that done at that time. If we take time now to go through what normally develops in a search where you talk about a variety of expectations that the board has, and you define the position in a very definitive way, that takes quite a bit of time. That's not something we can turn around, or we would ask you to turn around in a one or two hour meeting, because there's a lot of things to look at, a lot of things to consider, a lot of things to be prepared for. So we kept it very generic, and we would, we would suggest that you maintain that. But that is your decision.
Can I continue? Um, I think four numbers need, is the only one of us that has gone, has gone through this before. So I, I almost, but I didn't, contacted Saunders to ask you guys if you could bring sample postings or historical postings, because as a board member who's never gone through this before, I'm not quite sure what even that job description.
Sure.
I have to educate myself before I wrote it, because I've never hired.
Of course. Thank you. And that's a perfect segue kind of into part of our discussion, because when you're searching for a permanent superintendent, we would want you to go through an opportunity for input from the community and input from school leadership and different employee groups to identify the kinds of criteria that would be exemplified in the posting. And so in a district with the complexity and size of Scottsdale, I think to build consensus around a candidate and to set that candidate up for ultimate success when they come on board, I think you have lots of stakeholders who will want to have skin in the game. And so that, an interim search is very different.
Okay.
Because we're, we're going to be quick, and the number of people that are qualified, available, and willing is very small. And we're talking about a handful of people in our state that could really step in and do the kinds of things that I believe you're going to expect them to do.
Which is why you then have a generic.
Right.
So that we don't, we don't exclude anyone from that small pool of candidates.
Exactly. Because in a, in a, in an interim search like this, mid-year, you will have to be courting candidates. Candidates won't be courting you. And, you know, with the nature of all of us in this room being under a microscope, that's even exempl, that's even magnified because of the nature of Dr. Peterson's departure and because of the timing and because of media reports, you know, about, relative to this entire process. And so that kind of plays back to, let's get someone in the seat with a steady hand, and then let's put our team to work, build a consensus around a permanent person with the criteria that the community and the board and the employee groups have identified as important.
Okay. Thank you.
Keep in mind also, when we say we have a slim or small group, we're talking size. We're not talking qualifications. As Tim said, you have a very complex district, you have a very large district, you need somebody who is able to work in that environment and be successful, not only for themselves, but be successful for you. So part of that limitation is the qualification. So the job itself begins to narrow the qualifications. And as we talked prior to this meeting, that was one of the things that we said we have to really focus on in bringing candidates to you. We need to bring candidates to you who are well qualified.
Unfortunately, we find ourselves in a position where we have to work very quickly. And two of the things that I would really like, since I know that the superintendents that are on your shortlist, at least, not talking about any external candidate that might, might apply, would have experience, but also superintendent's certificate and administrative officer.
Okay. Thank you.
Especially with the short, the short timeline.
Right.
The initial start is kind of laid out well here. I agree so far. Yes. Thank you.
Hope so. We'll.
Mr. Jackson.
Thank you. Sounds like the interim, most likely this interim person knows that this is an interim post. Or would they be? I mean, I don't know. You guys are going to get the blue star for, for most cooperative students. Yes. And the answer is yes. Okay. And I want you to define for Steve and I what your idea of interim is. There are a number of ways that interim contracts have been developed. And it's important not just to communicate to us, but also to communicate to general counsel, because you'll want to be able to develop an interim contract with an expiration of some type. And so we'll, we'll, we'll need to be able to talk with candidates about what your expectation of interim is. And the second question that we're likely to get from some candidates is, is this an audition for the permanent position? Or is this an interim position only? And do I have the opportunity to, you know, for the permanent position? Or is this a six-month relationship at maximum? So you might kind of just reflect among yourselves about that, because we'll be asked that question.
And my, my thought was to have, at our September, January 7th study session, have it knowned, just to talk about that process and what that could look like.
Okay.
And, you know, hopefully we have a good idea about having this taken care of already by then.
Okay.
Because we're really not knowned for the permanent. And I see you with a lot more questions when it comes to talking about the process and qualifications.
Of course.
So your recommendation. So if we could focus today on the interim position and then see what happens.
Are you available January 7th?
Seven is the.
It's a Thursday.
January 7th, yes, I am.
Okay.
No, because they're, oh, okay. January 7th at 12 o'clock. Yeah. And we'll have to see at that point in time if, if it's okay to have the potential vendor here, or if we would, you know, I haven't researched that.
Of course, of course. But nonetheless, as part of our service to you, Steve is available January 7th, and we'll be there. And I'll actually be with my own board, but nonetheless, Steve will be here representing ASBA.
And I'm, I'm, I'm calling it live to entertain another option. And what I'm wondering is, because this, because I'm beginning to understand even the search for the interim superintendent is pretty tiny and intensive, and we're dealing with a small, a small pool as it is, does it make any sense, we have an assistant superintendent, would it make any sense to have our assistant superintendent in this asking role, so that all of our efforts can be focused on the permanent solution? That's going to take even longer some time.
And I just want to remind us to be careful about talking about individuals, that they stay entitled to 24-hour notice while I talk about a person.
Yeah, thank you, Michelle. And let me just kind of address strategy to that point. Boards have done a number of things when faced with situations like this. And that, one of the, one of the strategies that some boards have employed is appoint an internal leader from the central office as an interim person, so that there is a chain of command, so that there's a point of contact, not for, not only for employees, but for, for the board president, and so that we can have business as usual, so to speak. An outside interim is also a possibility to bring someone in, like we, like we've begun to talk about, for that same purpose. There's upside and downside to both strategies. If you appoint an internal person, presumably that person already has a real job already. And the job of superintendent, particularly in a large, complicated district, is more than a full-time job itself. So my recommendation, without talking with Steve, is that you have a backup plan and that we go looking to see what is there. And the backup plan is have an internal candidate or an internal person in name that you can fall back to, should we not have someone ready to go when the time is right.
Along the same lines, it's, with your job posting, could an internal person post or put their.
Yes.
So it doesn't exclude any internal person?
No.
Okay. And then I want to send the, if we went down that internal path, lead back to whatever that person's working to.
Exactly.
So it just may be.
Right.
I'm just trying to balance resources.
Yes.
Time and money, as well as outcomes, the trade-off.
Of course. And that's great thinking, because that may be the stopgap position that we're all placed in. And when I say we, we're now on, on your team, and so we're taking this as seriously as you are with regards to getting this leadership challenge stabilized for you.
Thank you. Well, I guess the next question is, what is a realistic timeframe? When would the tune us be as far as us seeing a list, a short list, long list, you know?
All right, let's talk about that.
All, no matter what? If we leave here today, what do we need to accomplish here today to have a list as soon as possible, and could that even be?
That's a great question, and certainly something we wanted to talk about. Boards are faced with the, the challenge of, in this kind of an environment, are faced with the challenge of the kind of person you want is not going to subject themselves to an extensive interview process and a public selection process. They'll say, you know, I don't need that in my life, okay? For the interim position. Yeah, no, certainly, this is an attractive opportunity. The permanent position is an attractive opportunity for the right professional. So this is, everything we're talking about is to get us from point A to point B, so to speak. And so one of the things that we need to talk about is, is exactly what you brought up, and that has to do with a list of candidates, a preliminary interview, and, or finalists for something like this. Indiana, excuse me, the folks that will be involved in this search, we have already heard from a couple of folks who, who have indicated, I wouldn't mind knowing more, and I have some interest, and what opportunity will I have to learn more about the position? And my answer has been, and Steve's answer is, and Steve's talked to a couple of folks also, Steve's answer has been, well, we're meeting with the board Thursday, and we should have more information to be able to share. Okay? So, and that puts us in the place whereby, if we have applicants, I need to know, we need to know what your expectation of screening is. And the reason I bring it up is because there are candidates that won't want to move forward in the process if we're, if we enter into the open records environment.
Need to find that.
Yes. The open records environment means if you identify a couple of finalists and you do interviews, those become public records. If Steve and Tim do some screening and, and bring you a finalist, then that person is subject to open records. Okay? So, and I encourage, Michelle, to just kind of reinforce this strategy, because we want to keep everybody safe, and we want to encourage the deepest talent pool that's possible because of the, because of the complexity of the search. So just do a, do a kind of a what if? What if there was a candidate out there that says to ASBA, I'd like to, I would like to move forward, but I can't subject myself to open records inquiry? Do you want us to screen those folks, or do you just want us to say, you're in or you're out? And so there's a.
I have it to that. To that point? Yeah. Are you okay? Well, my, my question, I, because I've never been to, this is going to sound, show everyone's going to be like, oh my God, Pam's such an idiot. Can, can you give me reasons why someone would not want to subject themselves to that open record? It makes me nervous to go forward with somebody who's going to subject themselves to open records.
Because they may be working somewhere else.
Okay. Is there another, is that the only reason?
Normally, it's because they're working somewhere else, or because they're already an accomplished professional who is, who just says, you know, if I can go in and steady, you know, have a steady hand and, you know, build some consensus around the district, I'm happy to come and help, but I don't, but I don't need that competitive search environment in my life. I mean, that doesn't make sense, like the look on your face.
No, it does. I'm just trying to think through the process. So I'm trying to remember what you said about, that basically just says, we go down, if we avoid that open record, then you bring up the person and that's who we get.
Or we can bring you a, a couple of people, or a couple that say, there's a lot of choices, and there's lots of degrees of, there's lots of degrees of, of, you know, opportunity here. And so you may want to say, bring us, you know, two people to interview, and we'll make a pick. You might want to say, bring us three, bring up, you know, and then it's up to us to say, you know, once we, you know, bring you in, then, you know, you have to be prepared for that, for that eventuality.
But why would it that be, why couldn't that be an executive session to protect the individuals who don't like to be?
It is, it is. Yeah, go ahead. It is, it is an executive session.
Let me explain a little differently, too. By putting the, the word out on the street that you're looking, we're going to get people of interest, that are interested. We're going to get people that are interested that have strong qualifications, highly qualified. We're going to get people that are interested that don't meet what you need. They don't have even the few things that you've mentioned here, that are not people that have been in the district office, they're not people that have been a superintendent, they're not people that have been in a large district, they don't know metropolitan Phoenix. There are people that we will look at, and as we've done this before, and say, you know, okay, we've got these fourteen people, but we know right off the bat that there's no need to bring some of them to you. How large that number is, could be half, could be more, that we say, that you really don't need to see them. Now, as Tim said, if, if your choice is really, you want to see everything and everybody, we can do that, but there may be some folks that say, we don't want to, as Tim said, we don't want to be part of that environment. And it's not because there's anything to hide, it's just that the level of, of, in terms of the people you're going to get, it's a little different than what you might see in a different environment.
Thank you for your help.
The strong level.
And in a typical search of a sophisticated district, you may get thirty applicants, and then.
For interns?
No. No, no, no.
Talking to interns.
Yes, okay, thank you. But in, when we get to the search for a permanent superintendent, and we advertise, and we work with our national network, okay, because we're part of a national network of superintendent searches, search organizations, we could get whatever number of applicants, a larger number, and then screen those down to some pool of interviews and call them preliminary candidates. Those preliminary candidates can come in in the executive session, interview with the board, and be protected from open records.
But now you're talking about permanent and.
Yes, this is a permanent search. Yes.
One, one of six large candidates.
Okay.
But you can talk, yeah, you're talking about a typical.
In a typical search, that's not an interim search, thank you. And then when you identify a couple of finalists, then those folks, then, under, under, under the open meeting expectations, then those people become subject to public scrutiny.
And that was the kind of thing that I thought could be covered a little bit more in the June very.
Exactly. Right. Because this is an exception to that, because it's interim, and the talent pool is going to be very small.
Okay. So let's come back to the interim, because maybe that's where I got a little confused. Because I hear you that the talent pool is going to be small, so I was struggling with, because it's going to be small to begin with, why do we want to make it even smaller by?
I think, I think part of that lies in, as I mentioned earlier, we've put out a generic posting. When you do a full search, I'm, just as an example, going back to that, we delineate dates that are very specific in terms of the process. This is not, in our perspective, not a time to do that. We don't want to say, on this date, this is a threshold, on this date, this is a threshold, on this date, this is a threshold. We can do that if you want, but that's going to slow the process down quite a bit, and it elongates things. If we leave it a little looser, then some of these questions If we leave it a little looser, then some of these questions can be answered as we move through it. For instance, to answer your question more, even more specifically, let's say that this process brings us 20 people, and we report back to this board that this process brings us 20 people, and we bring back to you that we've gone through and screened the applicants, and what we find is, we believe there's six, that we can honestly bring to the table that we believe would be successful, then you can make a choice at that point. We want to see all 20, we want to see six. And then we can make those contacts and see where they're at in the, in their thoughts in terms of coming before you.
Right.
So if you leave it a little open at this point and see what you get, then we'll know better, and you'll have a better opportunity to make a decision. That is not how we would normally do it, you know, full search.
Right.
We just wouldn't do it that way.
And I guess one of the other things that I would want to see besides superintendent certificate in this tree box is availability as soon as possible.
Okay.
So that we can move on with other business and have somebody to steady the ship in the meantime.
Good.
Can I, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Okay.
How do we handle then availability as soon as possible if it's an existing employee? They're not it. They wouldn't be anymore, they wouldn't be available. Like, if it was an existing employee for our district, that they may not, they might, that might exclude them, correct? Now, as you're saying, is that one of the, one of the ways out of your contract is to, is a promotion, right?
And just a little bit of historic, do you guys remember when we had co-interim superintendents several years ago? They continued to do many of their existing duties and had a supplemental to share those extra duties would be an option.
Sure.
If somebody were willing to do that.
Keep in mind also...
I would caution at this point in time to your point that we are really, as far as duties being spread out, more than ever. I'm sorry to interrupt, and I can suggest...
I just want to be real clear. So for the interim search, President Steve suggested, and I'm in complete agreement, that we would like someone with some district office experience and that it's certificated. Yes. But your generic posting did not obviously put those criteria, so we are going to get every, anybody who might be interested, they may or may not have those criteria. You bring, will you bring all of them to this?
Well, we're at your discretion, I think. That's, you know, kind of a blend of what Tim said and what Steve said is, you're guiding the process.
Sure.
We're giving you some recommendations.
And I understand you're suggesting we be fairly flexible, I think, is what you're saying, in open, so maybe, I mean, that's, I think, kind of, I think that's important, but I suppose, I guess, I don't know what I'm saying, do we draw a hard line there, or that, we need to draw a queue on that, is that correct?
Absolutely. Thank you. So to that point, what I have so far here, district office experience, familiarity with a district of our size, and a metropolitan environment, that obviously, familiarity with Phoenix metropolitan area, I have superintendent certificates, and available as soon as possible so far on the list, right? So then the question becomes, any suggestions, please?
To guide us.
Any recommendations you have for us, what we might consider to put on that list? Again, coming back to, oh, Pam Kirby, going back to, more of us haven't been through this before, and not knowing, and not having the time to think about that question, and come in prepared, and you've got more experience clearly, could you give us?
Every piece of, every element of criteria limits the pool for, and that's what it's designed to do. And we don't have a lot of time to, you know, to screen or recruit. And so I think, you know, those, in, you know, in our, in our preparation discussions, those are the kinds of criteria that we imagined you designing, what you've already identified. I mean, you're kind of right in line with what we thought we would here.
The only other thing that I might just throw out there for you to think about is the fact that persons coming in to Arizona, Arizona's got specific laws, we've got things in play, people that have experience in Arizona may have a better, will probably with this level, have a better background in things like budget, which is coming up, although I know you have a budget manager, the budget, finance, and other aspects of policy and laws. It's also okay to think about this in the sense of a preferred comment, so you could say, you know, successful superintendency or district office experience in Arizona is preferred, you could also approach it that way.
So just a clarifying point, and then just comment on the criteria. So clarifying point, if it was somebody internal, I think that is a candidate, we just need to figure out how to backfill that role, just, we just need to go in with our eyes open and know what's going to be.
Right, exactly.
And then in terms of process and criteria, I mean, in my experience, there's four things that you're always looking for, which is skills, experience, education, and then fit. And there's, I mean, twice. The reason why I'm not going down that path is because there's only a few people that actually sit in the role, they're going to be available, willing, and qualified.
Exactly.
So that, that skills, education, experience, and fit is an absolutely important conversation, and the next step for a permanent superintendent. So I, the list that we're creating, I think the, is about, I know maybe a team, but less is probably more, the big things, because we're trying to filter through this and get as much to drop through as possible. Now, you're using the vetting process and your experience with hiring, hiring 80 superintendents over the past five years to help filter and vet and qualify, and maybe for sure.
Keeping it a little generic is, I think, to your benefit at that point, and if I could just comment on the fit part, there's still the fit marketplace into it, but there's no way to really put that in appropriate language. You just can't do that. That comes when you sit across the table and you talk, because the things, the people that are going to be at this table are going to be well-qualified, they're going to have these things in place. The question you have is, you sit and talk to them, even if this is a six-month or less, or give or take assignment, is this the right person that's going to sit across the table from you? It's very important, but that comes at the interview stage.
Then our job will be to bring you no one that doesn't meet these elements.
Right.
Because your time is more valuable than that. That's what you, that's what you have us to do, is screen those out, bring you people that meet the criteria, that's why we start that.
So I didn't think about this until we started talking, Steve brought up Arizona, I was thinking of the Arizona landscape.
Yep.
And I'm conflicted on which way, if you address it, and that's the question of relocation. Because on the one hand, if you say, if you say no relocation, it makes the pool smaller. On the other hand, it's an interim, and relocation can be expensive. So I'm a bit torn, that might even be a contract point, and not anything to address at this point in time.
That would be my recommendation. I think it's going to be a rare, it would be a rare occurrence for an out-of-state candidate to be a good... Tucson, or like, when Northern Arizona, whatever. Right. And to that point, if you were able to identify a candidate, let's say, from Northern or Southern Arizona, you know, housing, or some kind of allowance, or something, could certainly be part of that.
Can we, Kirby, so about a familiarity with district assignments, what is that? I don't remember if you brought it up, but what did you mean by that? What's the non-familiarity? Did I bring it up?
I can answer that question, okay.
But I think, yes.
I've worked in both. I worked in a district of 1,000, and I worked in a district of 38,000. It's a different job. You just have to have a different mindset when you're in a large district. Not that the people in a small district don't work hard, they do, in fact, my time in a small district taught me how to work in a large district, because I had to do so many things, I didn't have a niche, I didn't have one job. So it's, it's a mindset in terms of when you come into a big organization with all the things that are occurring, and all the people with different responsibilities, and all the different outside pressures and internal pressures, you've got to know how that works, you've got to know how to handle it.
That'd be a master delegation.
And that...
And holding people accountable.
That's why it's important to look at, have they been in a situation that is, not exactly, because you're never going to get that, but somewhat like, so they're prepared to do this job? You have 32,000 students?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. You know, it's, it's a large district, and you've got to know how to deal with it outside.
I kind of want to put this on the table now. Where would you draw the line on the size of the district to say, this person's familiar and this person's not? Does that add 23,000? Is it 20,000? Is it 15,000? Is it 12,000? Or does that, so that we're not bickering them?
We'll see if we agree. You want me to throw a number out first?
I would say it depends on the skill set of the person.
I would say, I would say I would agree with that, but I, I think that you've got to have, have to look at what they've done, where they've been, what their experience has been, and if someone has been in a, you know, half the school districts in Arizona are 1,000 students or less.
Correct.
If my career has been 30 years in a district of 700 or 800, I'm going to question myself whether I can come here. And my answer would be, after 40 years of doing this, I wouldn't do that.
No, that would not be a good move.
If I'm, the first district I was in in Arizona had 1,000 students. If that's all I'd done, I would honestly say, I'm not ready for this, I'm sure if I've been there 30 years. But I also had 38,000. That gives me a better understanding. So we have to look at the profile. Maybe somebody's been, you know, in a 5,000 district, in a 10,000 district, maybe they've been 17,000, look at that whole profile. So is there an exact cutoff number? Absolutely not. But let's look at the profile and see, let's see what they've done. But big district experience, and it could also come back to what I said earlier, could be one of those preferred, in fact, all of these things that you've listed can be the successful candidate, the successful candidate shall have the following as preferred for our board to consider. You can list them all as preferred. That keeps it a little wider, a little more generic, and then you make the decision, once you see what the profile looks like.
Okay, so process question. If you did the initial screening, and we can arrange enough, all the board members, presidents, and bring some candidates in, would the, the next step after today just be interviews? Or would it be looking at a list, or how does that work?
Let's talk about that, because it's an open process that we wanted to define today. So that's a perfect segue. And so let's kind of work backwards from, I believe Dr. Peterson is no longer in the seat January 4th.
Right.
Okay. Because of the holidays, that's very aggressive to have someone in the seat by January 4th. And so if that's your expectation, we'll do our best, but the, you're going to, once again, narrow that, that pool of applicants pretty small. If you can, you know, extend it out into, a few weeks into January, then it gets a little bigger and a little more easily managed. And so that's kind of the first, if you work backwards, kind of the first mark in time. And if you have a strategy to get through a week or two in January, then we could work on timelines, and set some deadlines, and set up some board meetings to interview. So I guess, to that point, then what's the board's availability over the next two weeks?
I wonder if you say you're going to be vetting the process. I'm not trying to assert anything, but I agree with you.
No, no, no.
That you would do the first few weeks.
Oh, absolutely. No, I'm saying that, but so, let's say, no, Kim, you're right, you're exactly in the same, you know, our brains are in the same place. So let's say that we have the, the posting open, opened for a week or so, that takes you through Christmas, and then the week of the 28th, there's a few days in there that we could potentially come and work with you on some, on the applicant pool at that point in time. So that's why I'm asking, who is available, let's say, who's available the 29th and 30th?
Before you ask that, is that an executive session discussion, or is that...
Yes, when we're talking personnel.
So we should still call in, and you will accept someone on the line if we're in a different city, right?
Is that, is that protocol for this board?
Yeah, we post that it could be Californian.
Okay.
I would think of S, Philly, and person C, New York D.
Yep, exactly.
Person C, New Year's Day. Yeah. Oh, New Year's Day. But this, I think President Steve had asked, this kind of thing, we go out recently to get our...
Available, oh, okay, great.
...before, over the break, and I was very encouraged by the aggressiveness of the timeline, so...
Okay. So we can call in, I can certainly do that, so I will not be in town 26th, 22nd.
So we could do preliminary screening like the 29th.
I can do that. And then...
So if everybody's sent that, or under, send that to you, right? If everybody's got their availability, you can send that out.
Mm-hmm.
So we're just kind of strategizing among ourselves here. If I came and met with you the afternoon or evening of the 29th...
Can I have my question now? I'm not clear why, how that, if you're doing the vetting process, it would seem to me, okay, next week you're going to be collecting candidates, then you'll be actually vetting through it, doing the initial interview, so it would seem to be able to take you, I think, at the 28th, to probably accumulate candidates, go through them, and identify list. What would you have to talk about on the 29th, until you've gone through the survey to get it down to five, or whatever that number is?
I would anticipate we'd be working with a real small group of people.
Right.
No, in the, in the applicant pool.
In the applicant pool.
For an interim position, with a quick timeline.
So small that you won't even really vet because it'll be down to... I think they're vetting on these preferred, right? I mean, I, I'm hearing if they get an applicant that's only been in the district for three years with 1,000 kids, they're going to bring that person in. Well, don't, I'm sorry, don't you, you've done this so many times, you must, my understanding is that there is, there are qualified candidates that have, I mean, they've already gone through a vetting process, you already have their letters of recommendation, you know, and they said, if the right fit comes for a short period of, a short assignment, let us know.
Yes. We do have a, we do have a cadre of folks that, like Bonnie has described, yeah.
And that's part of the reason that the services are, if we can do this in an efficient manner, if the services are not very connected.
Right, and if you select us for the permanent search, then we'll probably just make this service part of that service, actually.
What I was going to say, and this kind of, when we think about the criteria of time for this candidate, and are we looking at, I'm just throwing this out here, as a six to 18-month possibility, are we limiting it to a six-month possibility? Can we make that decision today? Do we think, is, I mean...
I would recommend you leave it open-ended.
Okay.
And, you know, the intent is, from what at least I hear at this point, you haven't made the decision, but the intent is likely that you will consider at some point whether or not you're going to go out for a permanent superintendent. Let that process drive itself. One of the recommendations we always make in terms of that process, don't go any faster than you have to make the right decision, don't push it. This is aggressive. This is aggressive and not what you will hear from any search agent when it comes to the full search. We don't get aggressive like this then. This is aggressive because of January fourth. If the date was February fourth, we'd back off on how aggressive we are. Now, it comes down too to how aggressive can we be and satisfy your needs. I feel a little, that there's a little uncomfort level, you know, on the board in terms of pushing this fast. If that is too fast, we need to hear it.
And what we'll do when we screen folks is say, the board wants somebody in the seat the first week of January, are you available for that? And so presumably, if I come and discuss candidates with you on the twenty-ninth and executive session, I won't be discussing anybody that hasn't said I can make something work.
My preference would be, since we are talking small pool, that when you come and meet with us, you say this person can be ready. This person can't be ready until January twenty-third.
Right.
And this person needs until February fifteenth, because that will enable us to-
Yeah, make a value judgment, because really, now we're talking value judgments. Right.
So that's, I would consider just having a hard thing to say, you're out because you're not available on the fourth.
Part of that process is also reviewing, going over what the person is bringing to the table. You will have a document from them, and that's part of what we expect to have, showing what they've done, where they've been, their accomplishments. That, you know, won't be the type of depth and detail you get when you do an actual application for a long term, but you'll have something more than just the person there in front of you. There'll be other information about the person, and Tim will be able to tell you, here's where this person's been, here's what they've done, here's how long they've, you know, been doing this work, here's some of their accomplishments. And you'll have that conversation with them.
Mr. Jackson?
And I'm fully willing to call in on the twenty-ninth, of course, but it seems there's three of the five board members that are going to be out of town.
I may not be.
Okay. Well, two of us. I mean, I mean, we want to get somebody in the seat, obviously Dr. Peterson, since Dr. Peterson leaves ideally. But this is, I mean, I'd like to open it up to maybe we push the meeting we have with you, Tim, when we're all in town, which would be after New Year, which might push this person starting a week beyond what we're talking about. But at least we can all meet in person, we can talk to each other. I think it's a more efficient process. And how critical is it that we have somebody in the seat if Dr. Peterson vacates it? And it does give you a little more time to, you know-
Have to work out in the field.
Yeah, it's just, it's just an opinion I'd like to hear my colleagues' thoughts on that.
Well, one other, I don't think people would ask, maybe I'm wrong for an interim, that I think it could make it longer than a week after we meet, is the contract negotiation. I don't know how long that takes. A big piece being, what's the compensation?
Right.
And we haven't talked about it all today.
And we need to give candidates an idea, even if it's conceptually.
And so I don't know that it's going to go as fast as you think because of all that contract negotiation back and forth that has to happen, so.
However, I do think there's a lot of value in sitting in the room and talking to candidates straight away. There's a definite disadvantage to being on the phone.
Okay, so let's go back to process. You're not going to, you're going to bring resumes to us. First time we-
That was my idea.
Okay.
That I was just going to consult with the board in executive session, talk about preliminary applicants.
Then there would be another meeting-
Where you would set up who you want to add to you.
When that, I completely agree with that.
So that twenty-ninth is looking at resumes, looking at paper-based-
Consultation.
Screening.
Screening meeting.
So that's, that may pose concerns, because I agree, if you have a potential candidate, it's important.
Going into the conversation-
I knew what you were doing. I mean, I knew we weren't going to be meeting candidates on the twenty-ninth. I still would, I mean, where I come down is I prefer-
Right.
But I would go along with everybody, so I just would-
But we, and, you know, we specifically put on there, the board has the opportunity to direct ASBA to move forward for this reason, so that the board is in one place with regards to process. And so, you know, to your point, George, if we want to move that way, you know, we'll set meetings and calendar expectations. You know, in our preliminary conversations about this, we thought, okay, well, we'll get on the phone, we'll call folks we know, we'll go through our database of individuals, we'll get a slate of candidates, we'll talk to the board, and then be able to meet an early January timeline. But as Steve just said a little bit ago, if that's creating heartburn, then, you know, we're here to make, we're here to help you be successful.
And there is no absolute, going back to the conversation we had earlier, there is no absolute timeline. Too short to establish a timeline. January fourth would be great. May happen, may not happen. To go back to something Ms. Kirby said, and I think is relevant to this in the conversation even earlier, was if you're not going to have a position or a person in that position January fourth because the interim position doesn't work out, you need to be prepared just to assign somebody to say, you're the head administrator for now until such time as we get an interim.
That's the backup plan.
And that's really the backup. And is it likely that could occur? Well, you've kind of defined the timeline a little bit yourself, and that's pretty aggressive. If you have, if you have screening on the twenty-ninth, you have somebody on the fourth, you're going to have to have interviews and make a decision before the fourth.
And that's only a week.
That's pretty, that's pretty fast.
So I guess in light of all of these factors, you know, let me just propose an alternative strategy, and that is that we set up a meeting on the twenty-ninth as a, as an executive session to talk about candidate screening, and we'll see what we have. I mean, the worst-case scenario is it's a short meeting.
That's worse.
Oh, that's right.
That's for you, I can hear. So another process question. If we're going to be doing the initial screening in an executive session, then all of those documents will be executive session material.
Correct. And I'll, I'll give them to you on paper, and I'll ask for them to be returned at the end of the meeting.
Okay. So I am feeling a little uncomfortable not being here on the twenty-ninth.
Got it.
I just feel like this is a really important decision, and I know it's a balance between, you know-
Speed and, speed and comfort.
Quality.
Speed and quality, yes.
Um, I feel like I'd like to be here. I mean, I will do whatever is necessary, but if it's an executive session, we're looking through candidates, I feel that's my responsibility to actually be here if it doesn't exceed the timeframe.
You have a meeting tentatively scheduled for the seventh already?
Of January.
Of January?
We could check on it.
We could just make that a screening meeting.
Afterwards.
And that is, that's three weeks from today, but you have two major holidays in there in the meantime.
You could have an executive session prior to the meeting that you were thinking of having?
Right.
To do the screening.
I wish I had an "and" down there. Well, hey, yeah. I'm, yeah, go ahead. My "and" is, I think we need to walk out of here also with a backup plan and a hard date and execute the backup plan if we don't have it.
Makes sense.
I guess the one I might throw out there is that possibility of maybe postponing, I'm trying to understand specifically what a screening would be on January seventh. You know, there's still just a big part of me that would want to, much sooner, kind of have some sort of sense of where we are and what that search is. How small is our pool? Just, just kind of-
I can give the board that-
Expectations, do you know what I mean?
Sure.
And I'm kind of still wondering if that's possible and everyone comfortable with just some kind of meeting that just brings us up the speed of, here's what it's looking like right now. You know, we have ten, we have one, you know, and what, that's, I just, that sort of discussion could happen sooner, it seems to me. And if you can define exactly the screen, the process, January seventh, I guess, actual screening, is again, still just looking resumes at that time?
It wouldn't be an executive session meeting because it wouldn't qualify for that, but you could have, you could continue to have a meeting on the twenty-ninth and then on the seventh. And at the twenty-ninth, the report would be back from us. Tim would have to give it, I was not available on the twenty-ninth. The report from Tim could be where you are at that point. No names mentioned, not an executive session. It's just here's where we're at, here's who's applied, here's what the pool looks like. On that same night, you could have the determination, you could have an agenda item, and it was mentioned a moment ago, to talk about that first step. Because if we're pushing back the real screening to the seventh, you need somebody to be, you know, in charge, so to speak. You could have that discussion on the twenty-ninth, and that could be part of the agenda. You could even invite in executive session, you could invite, well, you wouldn't make, you can't make, have an executive session to have made a decision. You could have that decision on the twenty-ninth in executive session, or I should say, you could have the discussion in the executive session as to how you want to approach that. And then from that discussion, you can then make a decision how you were going to, what you were going to do after the executive session in terms of that stopgap on the fourth. Michelle, would you agree? As their attorney? Or did I convolute that too much?
Well, yeah. So the strategy that we-
I can make it simpler, right.
In Arizona, if a superintendent is hospitalized or something-
Yes.
Is there a legal thing that says this person takes over?
A chain of command, so to speak, or, no.
There's no chain of command.
No, that's under your pur, that's under your purview to appoint someone. And so to Steve's point, I think where he was going with that was, on the twenty-ninth, we could do a couple of things. I could come in, I could give you, I could talk about candidates that night in executive session, because presumably we'll have some by then. And we could make some work, you know, do some work on the screening process and not necessarily come to conclusion. We could then have an open meeting and establish a transition plan.
On what day?
On the twenty-ninth, except some of you wouldn't be here, but at the first meeting.
I'm sorry, but a transition plan to be what? That's where I'm going.
To have someone in the seat January fourth, if the assumption is we don't have qualified interim candidates identified yet. So there's a two-step process, potentially.
Is there a reason now we can't walk out tonight without a backup plan?
Not on the agenda.
I was going to say, can I ask what you think that might look like? Because I don't think we're, you know, to talk about that.
Right, we're not.
If it was, if it returns to vote, we're not going to. And we're covered until, we have a superintendent until the fourth. That's what I understand.
Right, exactly. You could, you could agenda a transition plan and approve it. In addition, so we could, on the twenty-ninth, you could have a board meeting and approve a transition plan. In addition, we could have an executive session, and I could brief you on candidates for the interim position. You could do both of those items that night, except we wouldn't have the whole board there. So we could do that at the first opportunity, I guess, is a better way to say it.
So it would be a briefing, right? It wouldn't be a decision-making executive session at all. It would be just-
Screening candidates. Screening candidates.
So I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just making sure that, I feel as though I'm doing my diligence in the process. I am fine with some kind of check-in on the twenty-ninth, but just screening, I just feel as though if we're talking about candidates, I'd like to be-
That's where I come down. Okay, so then let's establish the first available date to screen candidates, and then work backwards from there.
Okay, so, January seventh, if they're already scheduled, can we have, maybe fourth, maybe January fourth? Way back?
We could do it, you could do it in two-step process then. I'm not available on the fourth.
I could post to that meeting tomorrow, because that's, I'm just going to post it January seventh tomorrow also.
So if we could do a screening on January fourth, and then after we're, have a discussion and run on a transition plan until this happens. Transition and backup plan, right? Oh, transition means backup.
No, one of the same. Kind of one in the same, because clearly we won't have the interim selection, the interim search will not have culminated on the fourth. So on the fourth, you will need to identify an acting superintendent.
Wait, I was going to say, weren't we discussing doing that on the twenty-ninth?
Yes, but not everybody's here. So now we're, we're kind of off of the twenty-ninth-
Yeah.
Because-
As far as, but totally twenty-ninth as a briefing.
Be physically present.
No, no.
Training.
No, it's nothing, nothing.
Nothing on the twenty-ninth.
We'd like to all be here.
Okay.
So very important.
Are you available?
Well, yeah, no, and I agree. I wasn't trying to stress that we do something very important.
So you can't be silent.
I like the idea of a briefing on the twenty-ninth, just for us to kind of understand where they are, what, where the class is.
Did we get an email?
And Michelle, sounds all like that.
Steve, let me just ask a couple clarifying questions. One of the, one of the things that I'm hearing that's important to the board, and it seems like as a whole, is that you get an interim report. That doesn't have to be done in person. There could be a, you know, information provided either through your legal counsel, who would be my suggestion at least, and that goes out, every board member sees it at the same time. That interim report could come from us that says we've got ten candidates, they've got good experience, a little, just, you know, a quick briefing on what it amounts to. That could come out, really, on the twenty-ninth, like was suggested, possibly a meeting. So you've got that implied. Then earlier, we said that there could be a meeting on the seventh, but now that we've talked about the fourth for the screening, either one still works. So really, do you want to have a screening on the fourth right after the holiday, or would you rather wait to the seventh where you've got a meeting already scheduled and give you a little more time to think? It's really up to you.
If there's two meetings, the one longer, kind of your pleasure.
Yeah, exactly. So the screening-
I'd rather do the fourth and, yeah.
So the screening could be the fourth. The question then comes, do you feel you all need to be here for that interim plan to have somebody accountable, or at least appoint an administrator for the fourth? Or can you do that with part of the board here on the twenty-ninth and part of the board on the phone? Can you have that discussion, say, yeah, for those two, three days, two weeks maybe, this person, we're going to just say, you've got that, you've got the helm until then? Is that something you can do as part here and part on the phone?
I think the interim plan is important, so I think it's, it's on the fourth.
Okay.
Got it.
Then both would occur on the fourth. What you have is during the process of the day, on the fourth, you've got operations normal. You just move through it.
Wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. When you say the interim plan is important, are you talking about that backup plan?
That backup.
Someone who can be for a few days to, up to two weeks.
Right, a change of man.
You, you know, that means to be a person on the fourth?
Well, actually, I have a different definition of a backup plan, quite frankly.
Okay. So I think a backup plan is if we don't find somebody qualified, willing, and available by X date, then we will-
Execute.
Execute someone interim, not execute.
Execute a plan.
But we will then do support with somebody internally and focus all of our attention-
On the permit.
On the permit. Because if we don't have a solution by then, it's not going to get much better. I just feel like time's running away. And getting somebody in place, because quite frankly, we know what that permit search is going to look like and who it's going to track and what, when we need them hereby, it's all going to be when they're available, which is around-
Most likely a July one start.
Exactly. And you need every bit of six months, I think, that happens.
Exactly.
So I don't see a, that's why I think that's a kind of, well, okay. It's more definitely-
But that is a different plan than the, the, whatever it's called, than the one where someone's coming with the phones, that, for those few days or up to two weeks until our interim.
And we wrote that- Be careful not to be talking about the backup plan. We're not gonna do it. Yeah. Honestly, that's why I think it's very important for us to talk about it, um, based on the board.
Okay, here's what, here's what I hear board members, here's what I hear the flavor of the board to be, and then, please correct me where you think I'm wrong. We're going to, it's the board's desire, meet on the 4th in executive session to screen applicants. In addition, have an open board meeting to establish a chain of command for the district effective that day, affected the next day. On the 7th, and I'll be here on the 4th, on the 7th, Steve will be here to begin the conversation about the search for a permanent superintendent. In, in the meantime, I will update Michelle on progress, and she will communicate to board members in the most effective way that she can.
Mr. Jackson, sorry.
This is far from perfect.
Right, it's complicated, but it's okay.
And time's very short, but I would think, to improve our, we're just doing searches, you and Steve, would you be able to give us some color, maybe through communicating, through Michelle, hey, we've got some good candidates, interim potential candidates for the 4th, that I think will fit your criteria? Not maybe names, I mean, that, we, we would like to know, you're, you're like, hey, we're, it's, we're scraping the nut while under the barrel, and you better, you may want to consider thinking hard about...
Here's what I can do, I can talk at will with your attorney about anything, and she can decide what is appropriate to communicate and how to communicate it to you.
So on the 29th, to get, we, we, we have a pretty good idea of where you stand as far as, okay, so we know what we're coming into on the 4th, we're gonna be having a serious discussion about candidates.
People have better ideas.
Better ideas, I'm hearing.
Okay, so, I like, I follow, believe it or not, everything you said, the only thing that I would like for us to put a little more specificity around is, after that meeting on the 4th, for us to come up with some dates or process of bringing folks into interview, and so that we aren't just, oh, well, what do we do now, and then time's ticking away, I wanna, I want, or maybe a range of dates that we are available to interview, because the candidates may not be, I wonder how you lay all that out today?
Well, we, we can do the same thing we did before, and just send our January available to... Well, we have a board meeting on the 7th, and then we have a regular board meeting on the 12th.
Could we add on to those two days for interviewing, or not?
Yes, I was just gonna say, now presumably, if, you know, if we're really good at doing our homework, we can have candidates indicating that they would be available on the 7th.
So that might be another...
So that Steve could, in open session, begin the search for a permanent superintendent, that night, you could also hold a session for interviewing.
Yeah, I, 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 um, I just have a feeling we're, we're getting the permanent search going before we even...
I, I wanna separate the two.
Yeah, I think it is. Separate the two processes, which is why we're, you know, the right day to just talk about interim.
Okay.
I understand there'll be some questions that might pass over, but it won't be too long before we can ask those.
And to add a little bit to Ms. Kirby's question, in terms of the process, and that is on the agenda, very specifically the interview process, once the board has determined who they wanna see, let's say that it's three people, whatever the case may be, part of the discussion that we will have, and if that's on the 4th, for instance, Tim will have that discussion with you, will include the questions you're gonna ask, how you're gonna ask the questions, in terms of, you're gonna have one person as a spokesperson, you can all go around the table and ask a question, whatever the, we're gonna need to make that something that's very specific to the agenda on the 4th. Also, timing is important, what are you looking at in terms of, uh, uh, timing with these people, because you have to keep it consistent, if you give one person an hour and one person two hours, it doesn't work. You've gotta talk about some of the specifics of that, and we'll have that ready for you on the 4th, and Tim will lead you through that. To be ready for, if it's the 7th or later, whenever, to be ready for that date, here are the things that you need to be thinking about. Now, that's done in open session, there's no way to do that in executive session, Arizona law doesn't provide for that, but that's okay, we do that all the time. So that's when you really hone it down, and begin to talk about your expectations in greater fashion, and, and in a little more specificity, lay out the questions you want. And it's okay to do that in public session, because I'm gonna tell you, the people we're bringing to the table, they know the questions already, they really, they do.
It's more about, it's more about standardizing the process, and making sure that your questions get embedded into the process.
So that can, that can easily happen on the 4th.
So, to help us out on the 4th, would it be reasonable for, based on the conversation kind of criteria, plus your interim, kind of, a strong, like, what the questions would be like?
Yes.
And we can edit, modify, that's great, that'd be helpful for it.
That's a good part of the conversation on the 4th. Absolutely.
Yep.
For the 4th.
Yeah, for the 4th.
You get that preliminary conversation done early.
You know the questions we should be asking.
Yep, pretty much. Yeah, we've already got them.
Yeah. And then, because search timelines on here is really so comfortable bringing, but what I think is really important in timeline, and really being need to find, I mean, a drop date date, because we can go through all the process, so we can go through this, we can, um, interview on the 4th, interview on the 7th, and you can all decide, you know what? There's not the right fit, we don't have the time.
Right.
We have, you know, we need to move forward with, you know, whatever that, whatever that backup plan is, by, you know, whatever the date, January whatever, 18th, 25th, whatever, but it's not much longer than that, in my opinion, because it will take every bit of February 6th through April to get somebody here by June. I just think anything we do with our timing that's not getting us to the end solution, just not a good use of our time, we have to just consider what that is.
What would normally occur on the 7th is, let's say you had three people that you interviewed, you'd bring them in one at a time, you'd ask the same questions, each wanted to explain their thoughts, you'd, you'd have that opportunity to, to have some degree of conversation with them, you have to keep it within the questions that you ask. Then you have an opportunity during the executive session to actually talk a little bit about those people, no discussions. Once you come out of the executive session, you have an opportunity to have an open session meeting, to determine whether or not the board is ready to ask one of these people to enter into agreement, to a contract or a short-term agreement conversation with you and your district's attorney. You can add to that, that if you don't, and we can configure this language, Michelle and I can work together in regards to that, we can configure that language to include that if there is no determination, that any of the candidates, for instance, meet what you feel is appropriate, that you can then have a discussion in another agenda item, a next step. Next step could be, leave it open a little longer, keep working with ASBA, it could be talk about additional opportunities that you might have, so that agenda item can be there. If you decide on a person, and that person says yes, and you do, you can just not, you just table that item, you don't even go to it, you never touch that agenda item, so we can construct that, so it's kind of a covers both, covers all type scenario.
Yeah, then you have flexibility, and then you could absolutely say, we're abandoning that process when we're doing this.
And so, then one follow-up question for the January 4th executive session, can you increase the agenda item to define the compensation, so that we can move quickly into whatever interim contract we need to craft?
I don't see any reason why it couldn't, Michelle, I would say that would not be an executive session, I have no salary, would you agree? Cause you're not talking about a person, you're talking about a position.
Just thinking in terms of being able to negotiate, maybe what we have to do.
Generally, what we recommend is the board look at a range.
Right, okay.
Not set an absolute, look at a range.
And I think, I'm sorry.
Open session, I don't, that doesn't fall under executive session, unless you give other advice.
Unless you're comfortable.
Yeah, you're right.
So we'll ask for, you know, right, a concept, a compensation concept, so that then you have guidance when you sit down with this person and...
I'll send Michelle what I, how I would word it, and then you can fix it the way you think is appropriate.
How we've done it in other districts.
And would it also be reasonable for you to actually recommend, with that compensation range, if you're, if you're senior candidate, so on by the 4th, you should probably tell us your, um, what you're gonna pick.
Yeah, we have an idea.
I'm thinking that through, so on the, on the 4th, we'll have an executive session, we'll receive this candidate.
For the interim position, yes.
Then we go into an open meeting, to talk about the range of the compensation, the salary range.
And a, and a transition.
So then, on the 7th, ideally, we start to interview, but could we be put, are we putting ourselves into an unintended position of having candidates drop between the 4th and the 7th? Because we are even talking about what that range is until 4th.
Let's think about this, okay, so...
Do you think they're gonna say that a different way, or?
No, um, I think that, I don't think that salary will probably be a major determinant for candidates, as long as we are in the market.
Is that, is that inappropriate for you, right now, at this point, to give us any idea what that in the market would be?
Probably.
This is a good indication, as they look at Michelle.
Yeah, like, well...
However.
But you know what, yeah, you know...
Because you said we're gonna talk about it, no, we...
But it's not, I mean, you, you all know what superintendents of large metropolitan complicated districts are earning, and an interim position provides another set of challenges that, from a compensation standpoint, make it somewhat similar, or somewhat simpler, but no one wants to go to work in this kind of an environment without market-appropriate compensation.
Is the market compensation for a superintendent, because you are right, we didn't know what they make, what they're selling, is the market compensation for a superintendent the same dollar figure as the market compensation for an interim? Or is an interim discounted off of that, or more expensive than that?
I'd say similar, but you have, but you don't have the benefit, benefits consideration.
Okay, thanks.
Let me just say too, we're, we're beginning to waver a little from our agenda, that's okay. But what, what I will do, we have, we have a superintendent salary survey, we don't have it updated for this year, but we have it for last year, I can, I can send that to Michelle, that can be given to all board members at the same time, don't talk about it, please, until you're in a board meeting, but that is an information report that can go to you, so you can see what like districts in the state, and the county, and the size of your district are paying, then you can begin as individuals to frame that, and then you can have that conversation on the 4th, because the framework will be pretty clear as to the, the amount of range you're gonna be looking at. I can get to that.
You got, you're, you'll send the salary survey, our salary data.
I'm gonna send it to Michelle tomorrow.
We have data on two-thirds of all the superintendent's contracts.
I have a question, since I'm gonna be doing the posting, are you gonna send me the language?
Right.
I'm gonna send it to Michelle, she'll get it to you for posting this.
Okay. At the end, I would just like a recap of the date.
Yes, that's what, and I would, I would too, so make sure that...
Right, yeah.
So all nine of us have the same understanding.
I'm hearing timelines, by December 29th, we will individually receive an interim report and update.
From Michelle, and I will have a lengthy discussion with her about what's going on in the, in our world.
Okay, and that would be, that, that, if it comes from Michelle, then it's covered under executive doctrine.
Well, she'll craft it so, so nobody gets in trouble, she'll craft the communication to keep everybody in compliance.
And then, January 4th, we will meet to paper screen.
In executive session.
In executive session, then we will, um, then we'll meet in open meeting.
On the 4th.
On the 4th, after that, to talk about the transition plan, and to discuss questions that we'd be asking. Would you be able to send adjusted list?
I'll just bring them with me, and we'll just have a discussion, if that's okay with you.
Okay.
And thirdly, a compensation package.
Right.
Okay, three items on the 4th and open session.
And then, January 7th, if we possibly can, and if there's any way to get them back, that would be great.
All right, and then, and I'll facilitate the 4th meeting, Steve will facilitate the 7th, and then hopefully we'll all have clarity with the next thing.
Is January 7th an open meeting?
There'll be two meetings, great, January 7th is an open meeting, study session, and Steve will begin to work with the board for the search for the permanent superintendent position.
But I thought we were keeping that...
Yeah, we're not.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
The 7th is an executive session to interview.
Finalist.
Finalist, interview who the board has screened on Monday.
And we don't know if there'll be finalists or not.
Okay, and I make that distinction, because that's the...
Right, we're just gonna, and then the board will have an open session to determine if they're gonna ask for finalists at that point, or they wanna go right to appointing somebody, or asking someone, not appointing, but asking somebody if they wanna enter into contract negotiations at that point, or if they're not ready to do anything, then there's another agenda item that says, where are we gonna head from here?
And you and I can work on that one.
And I'll get that for you.
Is there a date of posting or close?
I'm sorry?
They have open, it's currently posted as open until filled, because we wanted, we wanted to get out there, get the information out, and then establish some kind of criteria.
And our study session on January 7th, that we already, um, pondered, if there's, you know, if there's something you can push off, have a agenda, would take a look at that, but, um, that is kinda...
County mayor.
Okay, but, yeah.
What is the destination, open meeting law, and then...
I am making me think something terrible.
Then there's the, um, strategic plan, the next, uh, next step, which is, the topic, which is high, um, high standards and accountability.
Yeah, okay.
Unless you wanna push that off.
Or maybe have a different... So January 7th is at noon right now?
Yeah.
The open study session is at noon.
And are we agendaing on the 7th study session, uh, begin, the discussion regarding the search for a permanent position?
Um, we need to talk about whether we'll need to do an RC and all of that, so that might be a, Danny's, is I get any information? Um, I asked Danny about this, can I, can I say that? Okay. We'll talk.
No, we're sorry.
Boy, she just...
Don't you have to go to the room?
I do, I'll be right back.
It would be my suggestion that you agenda that, so that Steve can begin to lead you through the steps to get you where you wanna go for a July 1 start, for a new person. You don't wanna lose another couple weeks. The prime time for recruiting... The prime time for recruiting is late winter, early spring. January, uh... Um, late January through April, that's prime time.
Okay, and that was one of the things we can talk about here.
Yep.
Okay, are we all in our same page?
What time on the fourth? And the seventh is noon. What time on the fourth?
We can look at our files.
Okay.
What is Monday?
Morning would be best.
I have a couple of meetings, Steve's out of town. I have a couple of meetings, but I'll move them because this is a higher priority.
Ten o'clock?
Yeah. I think, uh, that, that was me. Ten o'clock is on the floor.
Let's go.
I think there's a, that's open meeting or something in that afternoon.
Yeah.
What's at noon? Well, the, our study session right now is scheduled for noon.
So we're going to have an executive session before that or...
Well, it depends on the day we're doing it.
When are you nailed on the seventh?
I'd like to do it after possible, because my son's having surgery that night.
Oh.
It's ACL, it'll be fine, but... But I would like to be there.
Yeah, maybe we could do it after, that would, I prefer that too.
Well, I just, I just post at 12:00 and then you can keep going.
Can you guys do the uncle?
Steve on the seventh.
So what do you think our meeting will go to from that day, 12:00 to what?
Let me comment on that. Just don't set a time that we're going to be finished. This conversation can be long, and it could be intense, and you need to be, have all the time you need to make sure that at the end of those interviews, and then when you go into the open session, that you have plenty of time to make the right decision. So if the seventh, take a look at it and say, from noon on, on the seventh, you're committed.
I never, I never put an end on time.
Yeah, but I heard how long. Don't, don't consider how long. It could take two hours, it could take five.
Okay, but, but you should, I'm sorry. Well, what time is the end of the day?
The meeting starts at noon.
Our study session.
Our study session.
But we normally, sometimes we're done at 2:00, sometimes we're done at 4:00. But this time, we're going to have to have a hard stop on our study sessions because we have candidates coming in. So what time will they...
Two. Give yourself two hours to do the study session.
And then we don't have, then we go right into...
And then we'll go into each session.
Definitely, definitely. And so, um, but you had a suggestion earlier, Steve, if I heard you correctly, that we should probably set a time limit on the interviews so that it's consistent with all any candidates.
We will bring a recommendation, or Tim will bring a recommendation on the fourth to you as how the interviews actually look. Based on what we heard here today, I've got a concept of how I think it could play out. And I'll get that to Tim, and he can present it on the fourth to you.
And by just making sure, I thought that was a great recommendation to make sure it's considered.
One of the things, and this, this is for you and the audience too, please, the whole community. This is a difficult process, the interim, just because of the nature of it, just because of the timing of it and such. There's going to be times when we have these great discussions, but you've done a great job today at kind of filtering through it, asking us the right things. We didn't come ready to tell you this is what we have to do, because that wouldn't be fair. But you've drawn it from our presentation and information. You've drawn it in a little closer. You've kind of narrowed the fence on this, and that's where you need to be.
Exactly.
Our job now, to move forward with what you've given us, bring you some specifics on Monday in terms of a, uh, some recommendations on how to do some things. Still your determination if that's how it's going to look on the seventh. Because bottom line, for you and the community, you're making all the decisions. We bring recommendations, we bring thoughts, we give advice. We tell you when you can't do something, if we believe it's not going to work with Michelle. But you're the decision makers. And the other thing is, if we start causing any pain because of the process, tell us. If we're going too fast, too slow, if we're giving, giving you the wrong information, or you feel it's wrong, or we're not giving you everything you want, stop, stop us and say, timeout. I've got a problem. How do we fix this? Needs to be totally transparent for you and for us and for your community and your district. So just, you've done a great job tonight, and I really appreciate that. And I think that, you know, if we can find the right person and you're happy, then you can begin to move on to the next step.
We...
So the candidate interviews, the executive session for both paper screening and the candidate interviews are an exec to offer a layer of privacy, for lack of a better word, to anyone who might currently be in a commission somewhere and wants, doesn't want to lose their job somewhere because they're looking here.
Well, and really, we're just following the laws pretty specific with, with regards to personnel being discussed in executive session. This is an ultimate personnel decision. There have been different legal opinions on, on when, when there's an open record and when there isn't. And Michelle and I will sort through that with you as we get closer, because there may very well only be one finalist, because the talent pool may be that thin.
Well, you kind of, you said you passed a couple.
Yeah.
I signed up before.
So...
We've bounced around so much between, can, can we just go over?
Yeah.
What's open, what's executive, what time?
Yeah, let's, with that, but before we do, if, um...
We do have one last term question, and maybe we should discuss it before we do that.
Okay.
I'm going back to the fourth, and I'm trying to hone in on the, that short transition period. Not a Plan B if our search fails, but a very short transition period. We're not doing this over the next week. It would appear to me that we're going to be talking about an individual or a few individuals to fill that short transitional window. How do we, how does that work? How do we go in already kind of knowing? I mean, I guess that's why I'm trying to picture that conversation.
There's two ways.
Yeah.
There's two ways you can do that. If you're going to, and I'm going to tell you there's a problem with the first one, and I'll explain it. You can go into executive session and talk about specific people, but you have to give them notice. You have to give them 24-hour notice, and they by law can say, if there's any conversation about me, I want it in open session, okay? But on the other hand, how do you notice them if you haven't had a meeting first to determine who they are? So the law then says that you can have an agenda item to talk about the transition plan, not notice anyone, have a free and open conversation, and actually, in that conversation, just appoint a person to do that.
And that's what we would recommend.
And that's what we would recommend. That you have it in open session. You talk about what's best for the district in terms of transition plan, and then you need to look at each other. And somebody needs to be brave and step up and say, I think it'd be best right now if so-and-so took that position and see if there's, you know, if that person's willing to make a motion, if they're willing to be a second, if they're, if they vote, then you've named somebody. Totally open, totally in public. That can be a little bit hard if you start talking about two or three different people. It can be hard on those two or three different people. But it keeps things as transparent as possible. And you can't talk about specific people anyway until you notice them, like I said. And how do you notice them if you haven't decided who you're going to notice?
So they can name a person, and that person doesn't have to be there?
It's all, it's all done in open session.
But what else, what is that?
No, no, you're in, you're in exec...
But realistically, by January 29th, we may have a better idea than we have right now.
Don't, don't presuppose what you're going to have.
Right. And so, that's an excellent point. You know, we'll have some feel for how this is going, and then if we get to the fourth and we're not feeling all that great about process, then you'll come out into open session and say, look, we need a chain of command, and recommend X be acting superintendent.
That's, that's what I keep picturing. Now, first, we have to have a chain of command, because there is no one stepping up January 4th. So that's why I keep picturing is on, on January 4th, at some point, we will have to establish a chain of command as...
Even if it's for a few days, even if it's...
If it's not through January 7th.
Right, you're right.
We're possibly a little longer. And that's what I'm trying to understand. If we had no discussion prior about that, how do we make that happen on January 4th?
So couldn't we agenda, establish a transition plan?
Right.
Wouldn't that be an appropriate agenda item? And then that opens it up for you, and possible vote on transition planning.
On which date?
On the fourth.
On the fourth? I thought that's what it was going to be.
You need to have that.
That's what we have to do.
And yes.
That's an open meeting.
And it's the barbit point, you're going to have to act.
Okay, but on, on the fourth, we're having, having an open meeting where, am I following you right? We're putting names for who's going to step up until the test, or 13th, 14th, or whatever, on the stage, right? How, how do we have any idea who's, who even, we could vote on somebody who would say, yeah, thanks, but no thanks.
But what you can do is...
You can do the law.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say...
Okay, I guess you're right.
I would say that the first conversation is really not who's best, but what's best for the district. What is best for the district is in a, in a short period of a week, two weeks, whatever the case may be, however long that person could be there, and it could be longer, as you've discussed. What's the best thing for the district? And you talk about that in terms of what you need, not who you need.
Because what you really need is somebody to be fiduciarily responsible and have a chain of command should there be a problem, or should there be something that's actionable. This person isn't going to, you know, be responsible for much more than that, because otherwise, he'll do something different.
And it's really the person that's going to sign off, if there's something to be signed off on at that level. But then you do not say it's Joe Doakes. You don't name the person because of that particular issue. What you do is you say, somebody steps up and says, I think that Joe Doakes is the person we need to go to first and offer this opportunity to, and then you say, ask that person to come in, either to the whole group, or you assign them to meet with legal counsel and your board president. That conversation is had. That person can decline it at that point. So you don't name them. You, you're, as a board, are saying, we think it would be best if Joe's the one that does this.
In open session.
In open session.
So that person is in the room, was...
If he's in...
And they say, yes, I'll do that?
No, you don't do that, and, you know, you, you, you have them, I think, personally, that you assign your board president to meet with that person and legal counsel to say, okay, you heard what was said, you know what we need. Are you ready to do this? If they say no, you're back to the drawing board. If they say yes, you've made a decision. But you also, at that minute, give the authority to the board president to have that discussion. You said, you said, and we craft the agenda item just right, and we craft the motion just right. So it is given the acceptance of Joe is the person we would like to have in this place for the next period of time until we have an interim or the plan changes. And that's, that's doable, not easy, but it's doable.
I'm not trying to be, because, assuming a board session, we say, you can, you can sell and sell, somebody makes a motion, and we get the board president right then and there, because if that person declines, we still need him.
Yeah, you can, you can actually call a recess.
Could recess and call them.
Call a recess. If they're not here, you can call them. You can call a recess.
Right, the board doesn't call. The board just decided that, you know, we're continuing to interview for an interim. There's going to be days of lapse time. We'd like you to be acting soon.
And you just call a recess? You're still there. Board president calls that person if they're not here, or steps out of the room with them and says, you ready for this? They say yes? If they run, you've got an answer. So you can, you can, you can make this work.
Okay, I was kind of unclear on that. I think that's... Yeah, and so, and I think what we're trying to do is protect you from every possible contingency between now and January 7th, when hopefully we can get to the next step, so to speak. So the last piece I wanted to make sure we talked about is that in situations like this, and we'll repeat this in the situation when we're looking for a superintendent, but we will ask each candidate, when they become a candidate, to have no interaction with members of the board. And our expectation is that no member of the board have any interaction with any candidate during the search period of time. And so I guess that's just a basic expectation of boardsmanship and, and basic HR function of any corporation.
Now, I will, I will add to that, because I think I know your question. If there's an internal candidate, certain, certainly, the daily operation of the district is the exception. But talking about the position is not an exception. So if you're talking to a, if a person is speaking at a board meeting with the whole board, or for whatever reason has to communicate with you, as long as it's district business not related to this process, that's okay. Just don't get in any conversation beyond that.
And I believe your policies allow only, don't allow for that to occur anywhere. Is that right? Scottsdale policies?
Not, not specific that there couldn't be some conversation. It could be catching somebody in the hallway.
Gotcha.
You know, can you explain this to me? That at the last board meeting, you said this. Does that really mean this? You have those conversations. Those are okay. You're just not representing the board. You're representing yourself with a person saying, what's, what's, I need more information. Tell me what that meant.
The chain of command policy.
And that, and just to be clear, that would also apply to the transition, any transitional...
Yes.
Yeah, I'd say you're not talking to, as individuals, I would say you don't talk to anybody about, about the position. You can certainly answer your general questions if somebody in the community comes to you that you could decide last night. Well, you have one decision to make tonight, and that, that is, tell us to go forward and prosper for you.
You guys aren't leaving until we pick you up.
I like, I like your style.
Did we check my understanding?
I'm, I'm going to give a stat, go ahead, Bonnie, I'm sorry.
No, 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 go.
I interrupted you.
No, go right ahead. This way I can check my notes against what you said.
January 29th, I'll give Michelle a status.
December 29th.
December 29th.
It's my fault. My bad.
Certainly not. I'll connect with Michelle, get her a status update. She'll communicate to the board appropriately. January 4th, 10:00 AM, Tim comes, meets with the board in executive session, screen candidates. We go into open session to discuss transition planning, interview, standardizing the interview protocols, questions and timing, and have, and develop a concept on compensation for the interim superintendent. January 7th, Steve comes to have an open session to establish a transition plan, establish the transition plan, and conduct interviews, and potentially have an appointment later in the day. in the day. And we, Bonnie, I don't know that we made a decision on having in the open session to talk about the search for the permanent superintendent, to begin that process.
No, we haven't.
Kind of went back and forth on that part.
Yeah, I was going to ask for that to be added to the January 7th study session so that we would have a chance to do what we're doing right now and after...
Exactly, there you go. So, it's a study, thank you. So, the study session would be, talk about the search for the permanent position, talk about the transition plan, then we have interviews and then potentially an act, a business meeting or approvals if necessary. Do I have that right?
My understanding with the transition plan was going to be on the fourth. In open...
Oh, you're right. I have it down twice.
Okay.
Let me also, for clarification, Ms. Como. Specifically, on the 7th, the, there will be executive session for the interviews.
Thank you.
Those other items are in open session, that'll include things, and I'll get you the agenda, that'll include things like going over the protocol for interviewing, going over the questions, going over some of the expectations, making sure that we're all on the same, that's open. The only thing that's in closed session is the interviews. After the interviews, there'll be another agenda item, two actually, one to discuss the candidates and determine whether or not the board feels there is a specific candidate that they want to move toward or if they want to bring, let's say there's four people they interview or three, or if they want to bring two back, or even if they just want to bring, bring one back as a finalist to have a final conversation before they know...
We're on different pages.
That's back to open.
So, we're going to be going back and forth?
We're going to be going back and forth.
Can you clarify that? Because what you said was going to open to discuss candidates, are we talking about candidates or finalists?
You're going to, they're going to have an opportunity, they're going to be talking to candidates, let's say there's three. So, they've had the preliminaries of questions and all, then they go in and they have the interview. They can talk during the interview, they just can't make a decision. The interviews are over, they've kind of decompressed, you know, candidate A really brought to the table is candidate B really. At that point, they have an opportunity to come out, decide as a group whether you're ready to make a decision or not. If it's clear and evident to one of you to make a motion on a specific person they've interviewed, then that can come right out on the table. Or, if there needs to be open conversation in that meeting because you haven't, you know, the framework isn't there to have that motion made, then that can occur. From that discussion, we'll know where that takes us.
And are they talking about candidates in the open as candidate A, B and C?
Yeah.
Not with their real...
Right, they'll be talking about a candidate A, B and C until they're ready to...
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
And then if they name candidate A, then the way I normally do it is I will say, Madam President, what I heard is the board passed a motion to establish that candidate A is the person you'd like to offer an opportunity. And at that point, then I could name that person or the, or the board president could, but it's still just an offer to talk. Then she, if the board has said she's the one...
Authorize them to contract.
Would contact and say, you ready for this? And hopefully they're going to say, yeah. The, you know, as a board, obviously you can't speak for your, who you might talk about, but hopefully you've got a, kind of a good idea as individuals, you know, the structure of your district and who's prepared to step up.
So, someone, if there is a motion made to ask legal to pursue negotiations, contract negotiations, is we, we would have to vote on the contract at some point, right?
That'll come back to you later.
Second meeting, or the meeting after.
And are new interim superintendent contracts usually pretty simple?
For, for this, our recommendation would be absolutely make it as simple as possible, that's up to Michelle to do.
And we have boilerplate ones.
So, we don't need another meeting to understand a 30-page contract?
No, no.
No, this won't be like that.
What you do is you, you authorize at that time, and it'll all be part of the language we give you, you authorize at that time, if that person accepts that opportunity, that Michelle and the board president again, work with that person to establish the configuration of the contract or written agreement, however she feels is the best title, and then bring it back to the board and the board say, that's a go or, or not. You're, and the board has to really accept the whole package that they bring back. But part of the discussion you're going to have possibly before that, and that, that would be on the fourth also, is kind of the parameters of, you know...
Compensation.
What are you going to do? And that's why I'm sending Michelle that document tomorrow that gives you, once she gets it out to you, gives you an idea of where districts are at. And Tim was right on target, you're going to see a range by district anyway. Okay, you're going to see this district, for instance, in the valley of somewhat like size is kind of here. You may not know them by name, but you're going to see them by configuration and you're going to see it here. And you're going to be able to look at it and go, okay.
This is what we need to do.
If this is what the minimum in, I'm just going to say it, you don't have to go this way, but let's say you're looking at Maricopa County and say, the minimum large district in Maric County, Maricopa County is X, top is X plus 10, well, we're certainly not going to do X plus 10, but maybe our bottom is X and X plus 3, and that's where we're going to put our range and then they'll work it out when they talk to that person. As long as the bottom end is solid, you're going to satisfy the needs of a person who's going to want to take this. They're not, they're not here to boost their salary or their retirement, that's not why they're coming to this, they're coming here for other reasons, but it's, but it's got to be fair compensation.
So, on the, on the 7th study session, Sandra, what do you have?
We're going to start out at, at 10:00, no, 12:00, 12:00 PM with an open session to establish a transition plan and potentially have an appointment later that day.
Transition plan was repeated after that.
Oh, so that's not...
The transition plan part should come off.
Okay. So, the open meeting is to discuss, God, I don't...
Okay, so here's, here's the way I believe we crafted it. On the 7th, the study session will be open and obviously to talk about establishing the search for a permanent superintendent, that's the study session.
On the 7th.
On the 7th. Then you would, right, and then you adjourn the study session and conduct interviews in executive session.
Before you, before you do that, that's when we talk about the questions.
No, 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 we've done that, that's already done on the 4th.
Well, that's, okay, yes, you're right, I'm sorry.
Someone just sent you this.
Yeah, I wanted to just send me the list.
Yeah.
Well, I think we, I think we need to make sure we have it right, okay? Because a couple of different things emerged. But on the 7th, you'd have a study session, talk about this permanent search. You adjourn the study session, you conduct interviews for the interim position. At the conclusion of the interview period, you have the possibility to have open session to consider appointment. Your recommendation to enter into contract negotiations, that's the 7th. Make sense? On the 4th, we screen candidates in executive session. In open session, we establish a transition plan, talk about compensation and establish interview questions and protocol.
And it would be really helpful, it's going to be a long day, so it'd be really helpful if all board members could come with their own idea of questions we can at least... And you said that you would share?
Yeah, we have, we have, we have, we'd use them many times.
Okay. And I, I, so once we decide the kind of questions and probably just talking a little bit about, a little bit validate criteria on the 4th, would you be able to walk away, build the interview rubric that we would then, that really is just a reflection of, you know, so then we're all book reading the same way, we just kind of...
When you, when you talk about the questions on the 4th, it's not just establishing the questions, it's talking about your expectations. The right candidate will bring these types of things to the table.
Yep, it'll, should just emerge right out of that, but...
And again, you don't get so specific that you box yourself into a corner. You get specific enough that you're all on the same page and then the interviews boxes, will box you into a corner.
And what I mean by rubric is just a...
Right.
Exactly.
And the wise person was told me to realize that as a board, not only are we interviewing candidates during this conference, they are interviewing us.
Thank you. And more so, in, in the interim superintendency, absolutely, the folks that I anticipate wanting to talk to you will be interviewing you and you'll be courting them, that's the market.
So, on the 4th, we're going to be talking about the questions we're going to ask in the interview and when I heard you say, what our expectations were around those questions, it is a public meeting that there may be candidates who don't want to show up to that meeting and show their face, that, that it would be a disadvantage if they did it. There would be a disadvantage carrying this very rich board discussion, so does it make sense to video it? We'd like it to be a normal board meeting, no?
Doesn't matter. Because like I said earlier, these, these folks that you're going to have, you're not going to surprise them with any question.
Right.
They're not going to be surprised.
It falls under...
This is more for you as a board to be on the same page.
Are these questions very vague in general or the...
That would be our, our recommendation would be questions, appropriate interview questions that we would recommend will be very open-ended because you want to talk very little and you want the candidate to talk a lot.
Okay, understood.
And that, that, when you move forward into another stage, that'll change a little.
Yeah, for the real search, absolutely, then there's specific talents, skills, acumen that you'll want to identify, but we're not in that environment for this particular...
And Tim said it right, this is, they need to talk a lot and then they need to ask you, and you'll, you'll pick up a lot of this too, in terms of making a decision, in terms of fit, a lot of it'll come back to what they ask you. Because certain questions that they ask will tell you a lot.
Well, you've been a pleasure to work with.
And we will ask partners to...
Need a little love.
People all about that.
I don't hear that often.
So, you're going to send everything to Michelle? Do you need my email?
We have it.
We have it, but I'll, I'll use Michelle because what I want to do is make sure that she and I not only have the information, but we talk about it, make sure that she and I are in this, you in all day tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, and make sure that the wording is just exactly what she and I agreed to before you get it.
And I gave you my cell phone in case I'm not at my desk. I'll make sure you have it.
Email both to me in the morning?
Yes.
Okay.
Make sure I have that.
Okay.
I think I do.
Okay, then I would like to move forward with possible reaction, actually, action, to direct us to move forward with the search process for a district interim superintendent. Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those favor, aye? That motion passes by zero. And then a big motion to adjourn the special meeting. Yay! Oh, it's a favor, aye? That motion passes by zero.